Have a lot of teachers, y'all know how they are. They don't like to be quiet at the start of. It's all right. Okay. Good evening. Today is Monday, April the 15th, 2024, and the time is 7:00 PM. This meeting of the Prosper ISD Board of Trustees is hereby called to order according to Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. Representing the quorum this evening, we have Mr. Bridges, Mr. Dial, Mrs. Dixon, Mr. Cavender, Mr. Linker, Mr. Van Wolf, and myself, Bill Beavers. Mr. Van Wolf, you've got the invocation for us this evening.
Please join me. Dear Lord, thank you for allowing us together this evening, Lord. We celebrate all the great things in Prosper ISD, Lord, and we thank you, Lord, each day for blessing us with these incredible community members, our students, our staff, and our families throughout the district, Lord. We celebrate all the opportunities you provided for Prosper ISD, Lord, and we ask that you continue to cover us and surround us, Lord, protect this incredible community as we navigate the days ahead, Lord, as we continue to grow and scale, and as we continue to bring new folks into our community, into our schools, Lord. We ask that you provide wisdom and discernment for our board this evening as we make decisions that impact the district and those throughout our community, Lord, and we continue to thank you, Lord, for all of the amazing things that you bestowed upon us and the resources we have here in our community. In your name we pray. Amen.
You will please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now the Texas pledge.
Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you all. Mr. Bridges, you have the board vision for us.
Yes, the board's vision is to ensure a safe and supportive educational environment that promotes academic excellence and opportunities, honors traditions, fosters student learning, facilitates effective recruitment and retention of talented educators, and grows all people at all levels.
Perfect, thank you, sir. As always, this meeting is being conducted in accordance with Texas Open Meetings Act, which can be found in Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code. All of our voting must be in public, but we can privately discuss certain items, including but not limited to matters regarding individual employees, individual students, land acquisitions and real estate, school safety and security, and matters requiring legal advice. However, after that private discussion, any final vote must be in complete view of the public. In accordance with the Open Meetings Act, the agenda for tonight's meeting was posted for the public to view at least 72 hours before the meeting. Here in front of you now, you will see some important dates that we have coming up. We are inching closer and closer to graduation and those ceremonies, and then also we have an election here in a couple of weeks. This is the plug where we ask all of Prosper to get out there and vote. As we were talking with our elected officials in Austin, it always helps when we have the numbers of our people here in Prosper to back up what we're talking with them about. Y'all voting lends weight to all the conversations that were had, so please do so. And with that, Dr. Ferguson, you've got some celebrations for us tonight.
Wonderful time of year because we're getting to honor our valedictorians and salutatorians in the top spots in our graduating classes for the class of 2024. At Prosper High School, when I'm calling the name, if you will come up, the valedictorian is Caitlin Hoover. And the salutatorian at Prosper High School is Finny Hoover. Congratulations to you both. What are our plans next? Excellent, very good. Congratulations to both of you. We'll take a quick photo and make sure your parents are ready. So if y'all want to just kind of hang on the lane over there, it would be great. From Rock Hill High School, we have Ethan Hoesley and Alexia Callenhan. So Ethan is our valedictorian, number one in the class, and salutatorian is Alexia. So I didn't ask this earlier, but how long has Ethan been in Prosper? What grade were you? Seventh grade, Rogers?
Rogers in the eighth grade.
Okay. Okay, and where did you go to elementary?
Elementary.
Okay, very good. And then on to Hayes. Sometimes there's a few stepping stones. When did you join us at Prosper? Very good, excellent. Okay, we've got a photo of our Rock Hill High School valedictorians and salutatorians. So I'm going to ask y'all to kind of wait in the wings too, so we can get everybody together. And at Walnut Grove High School, first graduating class, inaugural class from the Grove, the valedictorian, Surviah Thomas. Eighth grade in the group. Red Reynolds, okay, they had him at our school because most of them haven't on. Fourth grade, okay, so what elementary? Folsom, and then over to Rogers. Congratulations. Let's all get together. Let's say we were going to do all of Allen South, so that they can just come over here maybe from the center. Because this is a big deal, making the top one and two in your class is not an easy task, especially in Prosper ISD. Thank you.
Congratulations.
I want to make sure that you understand how very proud we are of you. You set the standard of excellence at each of our high schools and for many years at each of our schools, whether you started in elementary, middle, or high school. There are numerous teachers, educators who have poured into you, whether it was in Prosper ISD or another school district. And I know that you are thankful for those educators and what they give and back. But I also want to say a thank you to your parents tonight, because without a parent who's supporting you, making sure that you're getting the grades, that you're studying, giving it all that you can, whether it's in your fine arts or athletics or academic competitions, the classroom, none of that happens without a lot of people surrounding you and making sure that you're at your absolute best. So let's say thank you to all of our parents for what they give and back. Congratulations to you all. I kept waiting to hear your speeches. I know they're going to be phenomenal. So y'all can go home and go writing though. Please have a seat. Onto more academics, national merit finalists, so you're going to see some of these students coming right back up. Ten Prosper ISD students have been named national merit finalists, placing them among the top 1% of over 1.3 million students across the nation who entered the 2024 National Merit Scholarship Program. To become a finalist, students submitted a detailed scholarship application, which included information about their academic records, participation in school and community activities, leadership abilities, employment, honors, and awards, and an essay. They also scored highly on the PSAT test. The National Merit Scholarship Program is an academic competition for recognition and scholarships. High school students enter the program by taking the PSAT, which serves as an initial screen for approximately 1.3 million entrants each year. From this group, approximately 15,000 advanced to the finalist level. So obviously, a ton of competition involved. These national merit finalists are now eligible for scholarships from the National Merit Scholarship Corporation, as well as colleges and universities. Winners will be announced later this year. Since it is in its first year, Walnut Grove does not have any students who are eligible to be national merit finalists. I wanted to note that, we didn't leave them out as I get into this. From Prosper High School, we have Caitlin Hoover. Yen Hau Lu. Finny. Sachin Kharmish. Hudson Simon. Annie Baum Young. Congratulations to all of you. We're going to take a quick photo. Congratulations, Ethan.
Awesome.
Congratulations.
Way to go.
If y'all want to wait over here, we're going to do the national merit for Rock Hill also. That way we can take one big photo together. For Rock Hill High School, we have Alexander Anderson. Anna Soff McPompey. Ethan values from Modi. IKEA. I heard an IKEA. And William Pan. Congratulations to you all. For tonight, we also celebrate UIL CX Debate, state champions from Rock Hill High School. CX Debate is an evidence-based debate that requires students to research, write, and develop arguments and strategies on both sides of the issue, to the equivalent of a master's-level thesis each year. This Rock Hill High School team competed in eight rounds over two days with 16 different judges. From a pool of 55 teams, they won every round and every judge's ballots, a rare occurrence. In addition to being state champions, they received individual speaker awards. So Peyton Carle, you can come forward. A little bit about Peyton CX Debate, state champion. Golden Gavel, top speaker in the tournament from among 110 competitors, and received perfect speaker awards. Congratulations. CX Debate State Champion, Ron Scavell, third-best speaker in the tournament. And I'd also like to bring Mr. Loa up. If you know anything about debate, the hours never end. Would that be correct?
Yes.
And now I want to ask your parents, do they debate you at home over topics? Sorry that we talked them down. So congratulations to you all. More celebrations to happen, we have UIL film. There are four categories of films that students can submit to UIL. Prosper High School was in the top three of four categories. Dallin Hansen, bronze narrative film. Kate Johnson, bronze narrative film, and silver documentary film. Rocco Spampanato, gold traditional animation film, and two-time state champions. And then Michael Logan, who is their teacher and head secretary. Congratulations. And how is your brother doing? This brother was also, oh, hi, state champion right back. Congratulations.
Well done.
Next up, we have an announcement of a new leader, but not new to Prosper ISD, Dr. Luke Troy. If you will come forward, please, with your family. Dr. Troy and I were in Georgetown this past weekend with his family for soccer, and he was in green, and I told him not much longer in greens. Had to make a switch, so I see that we purpled it up tonight. Excellent. Dr. Troy has served in education for 21 years. His roles have included teacher, athletic coach, instructional coach, and assistant principal. Dr. Troy currently serves as the assistant principal, or one of the assistant principals at Prosper High School, and we are proud to announce him as the very virtual principal at Ridgeland High School, Raider Nation. Congratulations. Please move the shoes.
The shoes, let's go.
He lets life know every month there will be a pair of shoes that are referred to. This is first, we're going to talk.
Congrats, Dr. Troy.
And the next group that we're going to be around this evening is a special group who has spent a year in being involved in the Middle School Superintendent Advisory Council. This group begins with leadership skills and really talking about how they're representing their school and just knock themselves to the individual. Then, as a group, we did an analysis of our personalities to find out where we are, north, south, east or west personality. And then those personalities were mixed up to create a team. And then that team had to decide, and these kids are coming from all of our different middle schools, they had to decide, what is it that we exactly feel like that we want to go after to make an improvement in Prosper ISD? So they worked for an entire year to be able to figure out, what is it? What are we going to do and are we going to make things better? And so you get down to the final teams, they present in front of a panel, which is comprised of their principals and then other leaders in the district, and they pitch their idea. There are certain stipulations that I put, like how much is this going to cost the district? How will this impact students? All the different things that we want to look at, and then they bring that presentation forward. And so they have to get up and do a lot with their speaking skills, which is phenomenal to be able to watch our youngest students, even from elementary, middle, and then on to high school, to see what they're capable of doing and the way that they're going to truly make a difference and change the world. So I'm excited to be able to have our middle school teams here, and I'm going to have them come up. I see that it's finally, they're ready. So before we get started, if y'all can turn and face the audience and introduce yourself. I know it's in your slide presentation, but that way they can know where. So if you'll tell them your name and then what school you're coming from.
I'm Billy Dial, I'm from Cape Middle School.
I'm T N C, and I'm Ethan Rogers.
I'm Kelsey Rogers, and I come from Rogers.
I'm Felicity Cleveland, and I go to Rogers.
I'm Casey Bailey, and I go to Rogers.
I'm Gio Ready, and I go to Rogers.
Very good, excellent. Well, you are about to be amazed with your project. It was, it's a difference maker, so I'm going to leave it there and let y'all listen.
Okay, so the project we chose to do was a school supply drive throughout the entire district for the elementary and middle schools. The main problem we're solving is giving school supplies to the elementary and middle school students that have no use for the said supplies. We are creating the school supplies drive to help give to other countries worldwide.
So why exactly do we want to solve this problem? We chose this idea for our project because so many school supplies at the end of the year go unused, such as colored pencils and journals and all of that, and it just is extras. And so usually it gets discarded, and so we found that there can be a use for these discarded supplies. And so what data do we have? So we can overall assume that many kids have leftover supplies from personal experiences at our own schools, but we're going to contact the principals and counselors from each elementary school and middle school, and then we'll draft a newsletter that can be sent to parents and read over announcements or a middle school and high school broadcast, something like that, for the middle schools. And then whenever lockers get cleaned out, students can drop their extras in the bin, or for elementary students who don't have lockers, out of their backpack at the end of the day.
So what is the cost? The organization we are using is Bless the Children. Once we collect all the supplies, we'll have to package the box ourselves and ship it out to the warehouse in Florida. The cheapest shipping company I could find was FedEx, and those are like the cost for every hundred pounds. And we were also told that to fund the shipping cost, the district would provide us with the money.
So what are the benefits for us? Well, the big one is helping those less fortunate, but also as Prosper, we're united and we are one, and this helps us show it, and also helping kids gain empathy. If you like, if you tell them like this pencil box is going to someone else who needs it, like that can make them feel like just how their impact happens. And how we plan to get it done is we have a little timeline, like announce it to the schools, the 24th, and then put out boxes on the 1st, and then collect boxes on the 12th, and then send off. So next week.
So many other districts and places have tried to do something similar like this. The one we chose to compare to and how to decide how our idea is different is McKinney ISD. In July 2020, they did a supplies donation, and I feel like ours is different because we're not only going to be giving to just where we are, we're also going to be giving to other people who might be in more need of it in third-world countries.
So our overall goal is to donate as much school supplies as possible to impoverished children across the world. And our message is that we believe as a team that we can provide what was once wasted supplies to people who are truly in need of them.
Well done.
I want to commend this group too, because it's not always easy to come in from different schools, and you may or may not know one another, but the way that they came together and really worked as a team and embraced all of the expectations, collecting data from their different school perspectives, and then saying, hey, we're all going to have ownership, because that was a big piece of it. It's not one person's going to do all the work and everybody's going to kind of sit and watch. Everybody had a role, and so they really just knocked it out of the park. And of course, their project is phenomenal because it's going to make the world a better place and teach a little bit of empathy, which we can all use a little bit more of. Love it, great job, guys.
Great job. All right, that brings us to, we're going to have a quick intermission, which, first of all, I want to say, students, that y'all were here tonight and honored, we are extremely proud of y'all. I think that y'all have heard that tonight, you know that your parents are, but as a board and representatives of the district, y'all are why we do this, and so thank you for taking advantage of everything that Prosper ISD has to offer and making us proud. We will have a brief intermission right now. Y'all are more than welcome to stay, but I know that y'all are smart kids and y'all have studying to do. So if you would like, go ahead and go home, but thank y'all for joining us this evening.
Thank you.
Give us about three minutes. Okay, we are now, we are through celebrations. That brings us to informational reports.
Okay, so enrollment continues. Oh, sorry, we got ahead, okay.
I'm sorry, what did I do?
This is the training for all of our trustees, a requirement.
Yes, thank you. I would read what was in front of me, that might help things. The board undergoes training every year. We are required so many hours. We are just, we have to report at this point. Everybody on the board is current and up to date, so thank y'all, everybody, for getting your training done this year.
And our enrollment continues to climb, so we're going to add 3,625 students from last year at this time for a grand total of 29,218 students total in the district. Last year, you'll notice that we were at 25,593. On average, we're enrolling about 30 students a week is kind of the going rate that we're seeing as far as movement coming into the district, and we do not foresee that slowing down at any point in time. So we are excited to add in everyone who wants to come join and be a part of the amazing things that are going on in Prosper ISD. And then just an update on our bond projects. Just as a reminder, we're crossing over into some of the 2019, finishing that bond out and then tapping into some of the 2023 bond from your bond sale of 400 million several months ago.
months ago. So a little bit of construction going on in the district. And certainly the rain, we're preparing for the spring rain and, um, just trying to make sure we're staying on pace with all of our projects, because that can certainly present challenges when you don't have a roof yet. And Mr. Alstren at this time will provide us with a fine arts report to give us an overview of all things fine arts and Prosper ISD.
Good evening, Dr. Ferguson, President Beavers.
Good evening, Mr. Alstren.
Members of the board. So for those of you at home, I'm John Alstren, Director of Fine Arts. This is my 10th year in the district. Mr. Tim Doyle is our Fine Arts Coordinator. He's not here tonight. We have two administrative assistants, Amy Kim and Dana Goodenough, and they have helped me greatly with this report tonight. Um, I left a, another copy of our enrollment packet if you want to do a deeper dive later. Uh, left it free there at your desk. It should be in the packet as well. So as we start to look at how many of those students that Dr. Ferguson was just talking about that we serve, let's just keep in mind that we are serving 100% of our elementary students in the fine arts with music in our class. So let's just focus a little bit on, um, those secondary students. So I began tracking enrollment data in 2016 when I was in my third year as the band director. I just wanted to make sure that enough kids were starting the programs. We had just started orchestra, and that's, that's why we started in 2016. Um, we had 2,500 kids at PHS, 1171 at Reynolds, and we thought Rogers was big at 1259, if we could just go back, right? But no. Four years later, that measly little 4,900 kids became 9,200 kids, and then another four years later, let's, let's just throw another 4,800 on top of that, and that gets us to this year. So in the 14 some odd thousand kids that we, uh, started this year with, 11,855 are currently in a fine arts class or fine arts program at the secondary level. That's 85% of our kiddos with 100% in elementary. So I know I'm stating the obvious a little bit here, but one thing that I would point out is year after year growth is at about 16% for the district. And for the fine arts programs, we're averaging about 19, 20%, which is pretty remarkable considering for as much as the democravers try, uh, they can never predict what grade level these kids are going to move in. So if they don't move in in fifth grade, they're not likely to join band, choir, orchestra, theater, or one of those long-term communal programs in sixth grade. So if we get them in seventh through 12th, we've got to find a way to get them plugged in to the arts, which is typically theater or art. And then I'll talk to you some, about some other offerings that we've in, increased over the years. So if we look at that middle school enrollment, that's showing around 2,400 in art, 1,400 in band, around 923 in choir, which is up 55% in the last three years. Dance is at 929, orchestra is at 829, which is up 118% in the last three years, and theater is at 1192. That's 77, 18 total number of students served in the middle school level with 37 total teachers, which is approximately a 208 to 1 ratio. But the good news is that our high school directors help out at our middle schools, and next year, the district has come in big, adding additional positions for middle school, uh, assistant orchestra and assistant choir directors. And the main reason for that growth is adding a second elective for sixth graders and a second elective for seventh graders in the last four years, which is major, major heavy lifting done by the CNI department to make that happen. Again, it all goes back to opportunities for kids. If we think about high school enrollment, we have 1,400 students served in art, 553 in band, 142 in cheerleading, 318 in choir, which is at 47% over the last three years. Dance and drill is at 404, which is up 56% in the last three years. Music electives is the class that I was talking about. When kids move in, they get plugged into music electives as an option. We're now at 208 students serves. Orchestra is at 230, and theater is at 589 for a total of 3,878. Total teachers is 61. 50 of those are full-time employees and 11 are coaches, paras, support staff. So what's next? Well, we're going to grow. So I'm going to state the obvious again. What we're looking at is just more of the same, right? But the better question is, what do we want these programs to look like in five years? We want to continue to see, number one, as our goal, overall growth and long-term commitments for our kids in our fine arts programs. So not just dabbling, but committing and making those long-term commitments like they will as adults. Goal number two, to plug more kids in while maintaining our standards as they arrive. And as we grow from four mega middle schools to eight more traditional-sized middle schools, that's more opportunities for kids, but it's also smaller pools to draw from. So now all of our amazing programs and clubs are going to be drawing from smaller populations. So it's going to be essential that we continue to share our kids and find ways for them to trailblaze and juggle multiple responsibilities, just like we do as adults. So this leads us to our essential question. How do we engage our students, both new and old, while maintaining our commitment to excellence during such a period of massive growth? And we know it's not just about numbers and data and quantities, but quality programming, instruction, student learning and outcomes. That's what defines our commitment to excellence. And as we know, the fine arts brings culture. What do we do? We provide a sense of belonging and a sense of community for our kids and for our campuses. Number two, the Fine Arts Office, central and campus administration supports all programs, attending shows, handling purchasing, behind-the-scenes support, bus requests, teacher support. Number three, the Fine Arts Office works to appreciate and celebrate our students and programs. Fine Arts had a glance newsletter, fine art signing days, and just high fives as they exit the field and the stage. The motto from our mission statement is to create, innovate, inspire, and excel. And that, we believe, is the road to the culture in our schools and community. Where you'll find us, I think you'll agree, that we see fine art students at almost every PISD event, providing music, spirit, or support. And again, the overall sense, the feeling of community. You'll see us at pep rallies, games, grand openings, ribbon cuttings, hope walk, Prosper connects, the Region 10 Fine Arts Summit, convocation, Veterans Day assemblies, senior citizens luncheons, senior stars tour, I'm sorry, Silver Stars Tour, community events. And then there's the students and staff we don't see because they're behind the scenes building sets and props, working backstage, running lights and sound. You'll see us under the lights, on the field, on the stage. Our middle school and high school drill teams continue to thrive with the addition of J, the addition of JV, uh, drill team this last year. We've got 86 on the Talonettes next year. Our middle school drill teams that used to be 11, 12 students turn out 35 to 40. We have more pom poms than we know what to do within this district. So again, our, our, when we think about our, uh, essential question, we think about how that relates to all students. The Suzuki Strings Program is one of those programs. Prosper ISD Fiddle Workshop is a unique, special blend of orchestra, Suzuki Strings, and Texas Fiddle Music. If you have not seen that, you need to come check out the Fiddle Workshop next year. And we have expansion efforts underway. Next year, as you know, we're opening our third Suzuki campus at Jackson Elementary School under the direction of Christina Alberon, our current music teacher at Sam Johnson Music. And then as you saw in February's board meeting, we had a standing ovation for United Sound as we learned Peer Mentoring Program that pairs students with and without disabilities in band and orchestra. It's taught by peer mentors, and they play the instrument of their choice at personally modified levels. They'll perform with a full orchestra twice a year, and we have expansion efforts underway in that program. Our Cheerabilities Program is a special program at all three high school campuses. It's also a peer mentoring program that pairs students with and without disabilities and cheerleading. There's performances at football games and at our high school drill team's spring shows. New this year, the Fine Arts Academy. As it stands, the Fine Arts Academy is not a brick and mortar building, but a group of honor ensembles comprised of our most dedicated and talented students. This is our all-district band, choir, and orchestra, the 380 All-Stars Jazz Band, which played at Convocation this year, and the 380 Elementary Honor Choir comprised of four fifth-grade students from each of our elementary campuses across the district who auditioned to be part of this group, and they will be performing at Convocation 2024. And all of these amazing things lead to all these cool badges that we get to put on all of our paperwork and logos and signature blocks. And what they mean is this. The Texas Art Education Association has named us a District of Distinction for four consecutive years. The NAMM Foundation has named us a Best Community for Music Education. We got that in today. We, it's our seventh year in a row to be a NAMM Best Community. And the Educational Theater Association has named us a Premier Community for Theater Education for three consecutive years. Unfortunately, there's simply not enough time to celebrate all the truly deserving individual student and overall program successes, especially when we're talking about 11,855 kids. The amount of recognition and highlights is astounding. Here's just a quick sampling of some of those results. PHS Band made their third appearance at the UIL State Marching Contest this year, and just before Richland opens, they will make their fourth trip back to Bands of America Grand Nationals in Indianapolis. National Wind Band honors, these are submitted recordings from the spring of 2023 and were recognized this past fall. The Rock Hill High School Wind Symphony was a national winner, Rushing Middle School Symphonic Winds, national winner, Rogers Middle School Symphonic Winds, commended winner, and Rushing Middle School Concert Band, commended winner. And if you had not already heard, this was actually the year of the raptor when it comes to fine arts and music. Rushing Orchestra was an invited ensemble and performed in Indianapolis last month at the Music for All National Festival. And the Rushing Middle School Band may prosper history, that is, with a performance at the International Midwest Band and Orchestra Clinic in Chicago. Dr. Ferguson was not conducting, she was just speaking to them before they played.
Tried, but they wouldn't play anything.
And in case you haven't heard, we've got a pretty good cheer program here in the district. The Walnut Grove High School Cheer in their inaugural year was seventh place at the UIL 5A State Cheerleading Championships with the, the best overall fight song routine in the state, and then became national champions for NCA. This is back-to-back years that Prosper ISD has brought home the trophy for NCA National Champions. Three quick student spotlights. Number one, Sarah Jane Hanchy. She was the lead role in several fine arts, um, that is, uh, theater shows at Walnut Grove High School, the Fall Show and the Musical. And then she came back and made All-State Choir as a soprano, and then returned to one-act play and made All-Star Cast at the Zone Level of One-Act Play. Benny Hu, who was just up here, he is the president of the National Technical Honor Society. He's the sixth chair alto saxophonist in the state of Texas, and he's also an amazing pianist. He was top 10 with the Texas Music Teachers Association and salutatorian of the high school. And then our elementary spotlight is Marlo Matthews. She auditioned for the National Children's Honor Choir in October of 2023. She performed at the 50th Annual Organization of American Cod A Educators Conference in Chicago, Illinois, at Chicago Symphony Hall. She had 15 hours of rehearsal in Chicago in over three days and countless hours of preparation, all facilitated by her amazing music teacher, one of our team leads, Corey Fisher, at Windsong Ranch Elementary. Our amazing visual art program is, is second to none. Out of over 35,000 entries, 29 of our students received superior ratings and will be advancing to the state event this April, in a week. PHS is sending 12, Walnut Grove is sending nine, and Rock Hill is sending eight entries. We had two gold seals in the spring of 2023, and we'll know on April 26th how many more we're bringing home from Austin this year. Here's just a quick sampling of some of the work. Speaking more about the music elective programs that we talked about, on the right of the screen, you'll see an advertisement from UNT that, beginning in the fall of 2025, they have a new degree. There's a need for a Bachelor of Arts in Commercial Music. They finally caught on what's happening in Prosper ISD. We're on year three of music production and history of music, popular music in the United States, that is. Uh, we have a growing interest in these programs, and in fact, there are so many students interested in taking these music electives. We now have enough for a full-time teacher at each of the high school campuses. And then there's our theater arts. Mayor Bristol proclaimed March as theater in our schools month this last March, and you can see the picture from the town council meeting. Additionally, we have consecutive distinctions as a premier community for theater education from both the Texas Thespians and the International Educational Theater Association. And this is where we throw the proverbial break a leg to Rock Hill Theater, who has advanced to the regional level. That's the fifth round in the one-act play contest. This is the third time in Prosper history that we've made it this far. So what that means is out of 249 6A high schools, Rock Hill is now in the top 24. So we hope that we'll get to see you out, and we have home stage advantage. So we will be hosting it at Rock Hill on April 25th at 1:30 PM. Due to your support, the Prosper ISD Fine Arts Programs are evolving as the leaders in their respective fields, so much so that some families are moving to Prosper just for our fine arts programs. Teachers reach out to me constantly, wanting to know how they can get into the district. Amazing facilities, support from the board, amazing leadership, helps us continue to attract and retain the best teachers. This helps sustain and expand opportunities, student engagement, culture, and new levels of excellence. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Alstren.
Thank you.
Mr. Alstren, we were surprised not to see a band student come out this time. I mean, next time for the report, right? The, the new.
Giving me ideas.
I know, exactly. So, great job. Thank you very much. We, we couldn't be more proud of, of the program that you put together. Really and truly, the amount of students that, that you have in there, absolutely awesome. So thank you. Okay, uh, that will now take us to consent agenda. Uh, that is item eight, um, in your packet. Um, any questions? Anything from anyone? If not, is there a motion to be made?
I'm a commission. I recommend that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you, Mrs. Dixon. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Van Wolf. Uh, any discussion on this? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor? That is all seven of us. Motion passes. All right, this brings us to, uh, number nine, action items. Um, we have a very important action item coming up this evening. Consideration and possible action regarding 2024, 2025 employee compensation plan. Dr. Ferguson, can you begin to walk us through a little bit of this?
Yes, I want to, number one, thank you all as the board for your support, because knowing the constraints that we're under, without receiving any funding from the state of Texas from 2019 to this point, for you all to really dig deep and make sure that our employees were honored at the level as much as we can do. What we all know is that we could never pay them what they're truly worth and what they do each and every day. But being able to bring a compensation package forward for three and a half percent increase, getting our starting pay to 60,000 for our beginning teachers, and then extending from that 20-year, because we used to stop at 20, and now extending that out to 25 for maybe some more veterans to come our way to Prosper. Um, we also made some adjustments to stipends as well for, we've got stipends for multiple things, coaches and, uh, different positions, directors, those types of things. But you'll see also some stipend adjustments for, uh, special education resource and inclusion, which is key, because as you're probably very well aware, as we continue to talk about this, trying to locate those employees, every district is in a great race trying to find the best of the best when it comes to special education. So you'll see adjustments for centralized programming, also for dual language. There are some adjustments also on that stipend as well. We'll make sure that we get this communication out to our employees tomorrow. Um, hopefully you all will feel a lot of love for what you've done. And again, I know that it could never be enough for what they do each and every day in our classrooms for our students, but I'm very proud of the work. This is the biggest, uh, raise that has ever happened in the history of Prosper ISD at three and a half percent. So I want to thank you for that.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, we will have a, a chance for discussion here in just a second, but, um, let's go ahead with the motion part of it, and then we can discuss if anybody has anything to say. Uh, so, um, hearing this, uh, is there a motion?
I will gladly make a motion. I move that the board approve the 2024, 2025 employee compensation plan as presented by the administration.
Thank you, Mr. Van Wolf. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Dial. Uh, man, people were, they were excited.
We're jumping at it. Let's go. Come on. Go.
No, uh, I, I want to open it up to discussion here. First of all, I, I do want to say, uh, Dr. Penn, Ms. Sees. maybe some more veterans to come our way to Prosper. We also made some adjustments to stipends as well for, we've got stipends for multiple things, coaches and different positions, directors, those types of things, but you'll see also some stipend adjustments for special education, resource, and inclusion, which is key, because as you're probably very well aware, as we continue to talk about this, trying to locate those employees, every district is in a great race trying to find the best of the best when it comes to special education. So you'll see adjustments for centralized programming, also for dual language. There are some adjustments also on that stipend as well. We'll make sure that we get this communication out to our employees tomorrow. Hopefully, you all will feel a lot of love for what you've done. And again, I know that it could never be enough for what they do each and every day in our classrooms for our students, but I'm very proud of the work. This is the biggest raise that has ever happened in the history of Prosperity at 3.5%. So, want to thank you for that.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, we will have a chance for discussion here in just a second, but let's go ahead with the motion part of it, and then we can discuss if anybody has anything to say. So, hearing this, is there a motion?
I will gladly make a motion. I move that the board approve the 2024-2025 Employee Compensation Plan as presented by the administration.
Thank you, Mr. Van Wolf. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Dial. Man, people were, they were excited.
We're jumping at it, let's go. Come on, go.
No, I want to open it up to discussion here. First of all, I do want to say, Dr. Penn, Ms. Sees, thank y'all for the work that many months has gone into this. This is not just, hey, we came up with this number and here we are. I know the amount that we were talking about in this. It is not something that the board came too lightly on it. So thank you for all the work that you did put in, leading up to this level. With that being said, thoughts from the rest of the board?
Yeah, I'll echo, thanks for all the work that was presented, the data that was presented, right? That was really helpful for, like, all of us to get comfortable with what's being put out there, but as we, Dr. Ferguson said, it's never enough. And so, I think it's a good move for us from a recruiting retention standpoint, and excited for what we are able to offer.
I agree. Anyone else?
I love the work done behind it, so echo our thanks as well. I think that this is a very special place for many reasons, but our people are the reason we're able to do it every single day. The buildings are nothing without the people that fill it. So, we are blessed beyond a measure with the folks we have here, and there's lots more to come, so we want to take care of them best we possibly can with the constraints put on us. So, really looking forward to doing this for everyone, so thank you for the work on it.
I agree. Mr. Van Wolf, I've said we have beautiful facilities here in Prosperity, but our biggest and best asset that we have is absolutely our people that are in the buildings, so very proud of them. Obviously, this is a big number. This will play into the budget for this next year. Again, we have talked about it before up here. I'm still surprised in getting my mind around the fact that the state had tens of billions of dollars in surplus funds this year and did not do anything for teachers on this, but, hey, we're going to lead the way here. I am truly hopeful that in this next session, the state will do something to help us out on this number, because, hey, this is tough, but it is absolutely the right thing to do, the point that you made. So, with that being said, any other thoughts? If not, I will call for a vote on this. Everyone in favor of the motion that we have before us? That is all seven of us. Congratulations, teachers. Okay, that now takes us to public comment time. Let's see here. The board will hear comments from the public at this time. Individuals wishing to speak must have added their names and topics to the public comment form, online or in person, prior to the start of tonight's meeting. If you did not sign up by the stated deadline, you will not be permitted to speak. Each speaker will be given three minutes this evening. Please respect the privacy of others and refrain from identifying students, employees, or other community members by name. The board has designated two separate opportunities, we will only be using one of them at this point. Any speaker with a specific complaint about a district's employee, decision, or operational issue should present that complaint through the appropriate mechanism, which is the district formal grievance process. Speakers with a specific complaint will be referred to district administration for information about the grievance process. With that being said, Mr. Adams, you are our first speaker this evening, and you will have three minutes. Do we have the timer?
There it is.
There we go.
Is it on? Yeah. Good evening, board, honorable board members, and Dr. Ferguson, and audience. I want to start by saying that I am a big proponent of public schools. I love our public schools in this district, I love our educators, and I support, my daughter goes to high school, she's graduating, and she's in the drill team, and I never missed a single football game. So I love public schools. I want to thank all of you for supporting public schools, and I'm so privileged to be here tonight and hear about the struggle that our public education system is going through firsthand, so thank you very much, and the achievements at the same time. So thank you very much. Again, my name is Tony Adams. This is a profound existential moment for our public schools. There was a tectonic shift that happened in the primary. Texas Governor Mr. Abbott and billionaire mega donors misinformed the voters with catchy phrases like "parents' choice" to privatize our public schools for substandard education. Mr. Abbott's big money did succeed, but his hand-picked voucher candidates could help Democrats who are staunch supporters of public education could flip these districts, especially in November, including House District 61. The data is there. There's a bipartisan pro-public education majority, and I'm confident we will keep defending and funding our schools through bipartisan coalitions and negotiations through strength. Every educator's vote counts this November. Encouraging voting and support of public education are central to the work of public schools, as the US Supreme Court has observed, the objective to our public education is to inculcate fundamental values necessary to the maintenance of democratic political system. To conclude, every educator has full rights to engage in campaigns outside of school at their private time, in the weekends, in the evening, outside of school. So, please do not be afraid of AG scare tactic lawsuits for electioneering, as that will not apply outside school. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next, we have Mr. Moyer.
Hello.
Hold on just a second. We're going to give it, no, no, you come on, we were talking about the timing. I didn't want to short you three seconds there.
All right. Well, thank you, President Beavers, Board of Trustees, Dr. Ferguson, thank you for your time. If you remember, I was here in January to kind of give you an update on some of the things for the green space along Frontier Parkway, behind Light Farms, and the adjacent tract of land that is being considered to buy. And I know it's kind of a weird transaction, because you have the adjacent tract, you have the green space, you have two different buyers and sellers, and the ISD. So, first off, I just want to say, I know you guys have a thankless job. My wife and I, we have students in the district, we love it here, we chose it here because it's one of the best in the area. But I'm not here to argue or just anything like that, I want to be a partner with the district to find solutions moving forward. I'm not naive to know that Light Farms Elementary, Boyer Elementary, our schools are crowded, and we're looking for other opportunities. We passed a $2 billion-plus bond for six new elementary schools, and even one to expand. But here's the thing, and I just want to talk to you guys. The private landowner of the adjacent tract, his family, and they originally owned 80 acres on both sides of the tracks there. One track that's left is one that you're looking to pursue to buy. It's been for sale, or pending sale, for almost six years now. Why didn't the Light Farms RPG buy that land? I don't know, I can't give you an answer for it, but it's been the same price listed on MLS over and over again for the last six years, and no one will buy it. Is it because, I don't know, is it a floodplain? I mean, I know I can't give you all the details from FEMA, and I'm sorry, it's a small piece of paper, but it's a Zone A floodplain. The Pew Foundation recently did a study a couple years ago, talking about schools in flood zones, specifically Zone As. Across the country, there was 2,200 schools out of roughly 97,000 schools that were in a Zone A floodplain. So that's 2% of schools, and most of those are on, you know, the eastern seaboard, the Gulf Coast. You know, we're pretty far inland here in Texas, and I don't know if you want to add yourself to that list. The other thing I want to talk to you about is access points. That land has one access point, and you're coming to the mud board of Light Farms to buy the other tract of land behind all the homes there. Now, the rendering that was given to the mud board here, it shows two tracks, one going straight up here that he has right now, and the one going along all these homes behind my house and a lot of my neighbor's homes. These two access points look like they converge to one. So to me, technically, I don't know, like I said, maybe I'm being naive in saying that there's only one access point to this potential school. So, here's the thing, you know, I'm, as a landowner, I'm not the only person here speaking. I told you last time, we had 48 homes that all signed that petition. We have up to over 300 people now who have signed that petition. We just want our voices to be heard. The mud board voted to have a town hall meeting with you to answer our questions that never happened. Then they rushed it through an LOI and things like that.
If you can finish your sentence.
Can I have 30 seconds? 30 seconds?
If you could finish your sentence.
Yes. All I'm asking is just, you said earlier, we have the best facilities in the best district. Let's find the best solution moving forward, maybe another property. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moyer.
Thank you.
Okay, that will take us to our report from the superintendent.
Yes, so I want to just give a shout out to Ms. Webb, her team, Ms. Brantley, really organizing behind the scenes, this great event, and then each and every one of our leaders, our Hope Squad advisors and our Hope Squad students, board members, just collectively the largest turnout that we've ever had at Hope Walk before. It was a beautiful day, and certainly a ton of fun, being able to connect with our community and really engage and open that talk up about mental health awareness, and our kids do such a fabulous job in really bringing that forward. So, that certainly hits goal number two for one of my superintendent goals, so I wanted to highlight that, because it was certainly a special day, but it's really the work that our kids and our staff do each and every day to really bring that to the forefront, and it's having a great impact just on the culture and the overall well-being of our community as a whole. And then our Celebration of Service, which was outstanding, we had that over two days. I want to thank the Prosper Education Foundation, not only for the Hope Walk, but also for contributing to the Celebration of Service. They're one of our greatest partners in the way that they give back and really enhance what we're able to do in the district, but really being able to just have two spectacular nights where our communications team did an outstanding job of really coordinating, bringing that all together, along with Ms. Brantley's team, with our events, to really make this a moment that our educators, who were honored that evening, as well as their family members, really feel that extra touch that we all want for educators. The money is always great, I'll never say that it isn't for our staff, but these moments also matter when we really highlight and honor the work of great educators in this district, and then being able to bring our community partners alongside, whether it was Raising Canes, or Rotary, or Lexus, or Prosper Education Foundation, just the way that they truly give back, Joyful Mess, local groups, making sure that we have all of those great things offered to our staff and that they really feel special that evening. As I said, that night, we should have these every single night of the year for our educators in this great district, because as Mr. Van Wolf said, we are blessed with the best, for sure. And then last is all of you. So, one thing that you may or may not be aware of is that our board goes on instructional walks once a quarter, and so this instructional walk for the last quarter of the year, we were able to go to Light Farms Elementary and do a walk there to look at the instruction, but also engage with Mr. Turner and Ms. Delly. And then we made our way over to Reynolds Middle School, where we were able to engage with Ms. Mullins, and then also with Mr. Goldsmith, who is the outgoing principal. And then our last stop was at Daniel L. Jones Middle School, to be able to tour that facility while it's still under construction, and the building is just absolutely breathtaking. I think you all can speak to that, but our facilities certainly help recruit, and they help retain our employees. It's a reason that our families want to come also to this district, but as you all have said, the true magic, the true heartbeat of what's going on in our schools are the people that we put inside. And so, to be able to give just the best of the best facility for our people to work in each and every day is one of the greatest things that you all also do in giving back to this community, because these buildings will be standing the test of time, and the materials that we use in these facilities are just top-notch, and really are things that we're proud of, as I've toured other schools across this area, across the state. We are just a cut above in everything that we do, and our facilities also say we're a cut above in all that we do, and that's a credit to each of you, and certainly Dr. Bradley, Mr. Shirley, their team, working with Huckabee and Pogue, to make sure that we have the best of the best for our kids to learn in, and our teachers and staff to work in. So, thank you. And then the fire truck pool, so this was 26 different teams who came out on Saturday, I believe it's the 23rd, am I right? Dr. Hickey, do I have that date right, the 23rd? I was at several different events. It happened in, well, it was, you know what, today's the 15th, there's no way it could be the 23rd unless it was March 23rd. It's all starting to run together, we're heading to graduation. But we had our fire truck pool, so this is to help support our Special Olympics initiative, and you can see Raising Canes there, our fire department, so we had a lot of our community out, police departments, several of our schools made teams, and there were over $3,000 that were raised to help support Special Olympics. So, just another great community event with a great turnout, and really appreciate what Dr. Hickey and her team did there, and Robbie Fitzsimmons, who is actually kind of the mastermind behind making sure all of these things happen, and if you'll remember, a couple years ago, he was the superintendent award winner of the year because of his outreach well beyond the scope of his job. And so he continues to show up in a big way and really make our community, our school community, even better. So, really appreciate them. And then Special Olympics also came out, so they were able to see firsthand what Prosper ISD does. So it was a great day to really celebrate our great community, but also our staff and so many others.
All right, thank you, Dr. Ferguson. That will now bring us to closed session. We will enter into closed session according to Texas Government Code, Chapter 551, Sections 071, 072, 074, and 076. Thank you very much for coming. The time is 10:54 PM. As soon as I can find where we are on here. Okay, 13 items discussed in closed session. Consideration and possible action regarding hiring of contract personnel. Is there a motion?
I move that the board approve the hiring of contract personnel as presented by the administration.
Thank you, Mr. Bridges. Is there a second?
I will second.
Thank you, Mr. Linker. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor? That is all seven of us, and that takes us to the adjournment. The time is now 10:55 PM. Thank you and good night.